Correct. Patty, would you like me to repeat that?
No, we're good.
Okay.
Okay. Trustee Ganance.
What am I supposed to say?
In favor, maybe.
Thank you. I keep saying I agree. In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan.
I also agree in favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Danine.
In favor. Okay, let's move to the staff reports. There was an Altamont Fire Department report submitted. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Miller? He is on his... Oh, wait, I admitted him. I think he's stuck in the waiting room. Well.
I was texting him. He's having trouble with audio.
Okay.
Couldn't get the microphone to work.
Anybody have questions? Maybe Nick could help. If you have any, Nick might be able to answer them. Are we done with the report? Okay. Jeff, is there anything on public works you'd like to tell us?
Yes, I'd like to talk about the water situation.
That would be great. Thank you. Go ahead.
On February 23rd, we tested the raw water at the Brandle Road well site. And our manganese came back at .59 milligrams per liter. Our standard or MCL maximum contaminant level is .3 by EPA. So we re-sampled again on, I believe, oh, 3.8. We sampled again. The results came back as .28 milligrams per liter, which is lower than the .3, but you have to average the two together and it was above the .3 standard. So that's the reason everybody got this letter in the mail with their water bill. There's a couple of sites where people didn't get their water bill directly. So they were hand-delivered. We... This was all done through Albany County Health Department. We shut the well site down. It's been down ever since. We're working strictly on Gun Club well. We have no problem with the manganese there. As a matter of fact, oh, back in 2019, we tested it and our manganese was less than .002 milligrams per liter. And remember, the standard is a .3 milligrams per liter. So way below that. Just to make sure everybody is on board, we retested again. And we're still waiting for the results, but we've never had a hit on this ever since the well's been served. So there should be no problem. There's no problem to anybody in the village. Had some questions of what the residents should do. They don't have to do anything. We've taken care of that. Right now, we're working with Albany County and also with our village engineers to address this problem and it's going to entail more testing and chances are, we're going to have to filter this site. So right now, it's still in the planning stages. Like I said, we're working with Albany County. They've been very helpful. If anybody has any concerns at all, any health concerns, definitely contact Albany County. I included the contact name and number for Albany County. Max, I can't remember his last name, but we've been working with him for the past year on this. And like I said, there's absolutely no, no problem with it right now. Before, I think we were working probably 30% of our production was coming out of Brandle Road and 70 from Gun Club, excuse me. So even with that high number, it was mixed with Gun Club road water. So it wasn't really that high going out to the people. I don't know what else to say about that other than, you know, feel free to give me a call at the village or Larry a call at the village or call the Health Department. Other things to talk about here. We normally, at this point in time, we do our spring flushing. We're gonna skip that for the spring because that site is down. For the past six or eight years, we've done aggressive flushing, which means we flush one way and then flush the other way. And it would make it a lot harder to flush with this well site off. And also, I don't want to risk the chance of, you know, water main break or any problems with only one source that we have right now. So we're gonna skip that and probably do that in the fall. What else? Oh, our bag and brush pickup we're doing now, but there's no set schedule. And I just want to remind everybody, I just want to remind everybody that the bag should be light enough for one guy to pick up and put in the truck. And also, bundle your brush. Have to be four foot or less and tied with a rope or string, strong enough so when they pick it up, it doesn't fall all over the road. I think, oh, we're waiting for the blacktop plants to open too, so that we can start patching potholes. Up until this point, we had to patch with coal patch, which is very expensive and it doesn't last more than a few weeks in some of these potholes. So that's why if we've got potholes in your neighborhood, we're gonna get to them just as soon as the plant's open. And I think that's all I got.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Does anybody have questions on the board for Jeff?
I had two questions. One, back to the manganese issue, how frequently do you guys do that test? Like, when was the last time we got a passing result off that well?
We were not under obligation from the state or the county to test more than every two years. So every two years, we've been testing for it. We took it upon ourselves to test. And EPA standards combine iron and manganese and they have to be, they can't be above a .5. And we haven't been above a .5 ever since this well site went into production. But this time, we tested for manganese exclusively and not iron. And that's when we got that hit. And like I said, our second test, two weeks later, it was half, almost half of that. So we don't, we don't know what's going on. We don't know why all of a sudden it dropped. We don't know why all of a sudden it spiked. But err on the side of caution, we shut this site right down and the engineers are working on it to see what's going on.
Okay, so my guess, what I was trying to get is you guys have tested this periodically during the history of the well and this has never happened before, right?
Correct.
Yep. The second question was, do you have any idea of how long this filtration solution is going to take? Like, do you think that will be up and running by the fall or is this gonna be like a really long project?
That I haven't thought about because we're operating the site once a week, pumping it to waste. And then our engineers are gonna sample it. And so right, right now, nobody knows what's really going on with those two wells.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else have questions for Jeff? Okay, no, we're good there. All right, thanks, Jeff, for that part. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I think Chief Johnson is here. Do you have anything for us tonight, Chief?
I think he's here.
Um, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Just a couple of notes. I mean, springs here, obviously, it's coming in full force. So we have seen an uptick in just the speeds that are, people are speeding up just because they're happy to get out of the house. But just wanted to remind people to slow down. And that, that being said, ticket production is up quite a bit because of it. And the new wind car computers are doing their thing. But other than that, just, just keep an eye on, and it's, and still, the crosswalks are still something we're out there looking at constantly because it's a perpetual issue here. So just want to give people a reminder to yield to people in the crosswalks.
I did know, I'm sorry. I was gonna say, I did notice that the new, some new signage has gone up in the crosswalks for the school. So that's great.
Yep. The lights aren't there, but they did do the double-sided signs.
Which is, it really stands out, which is super.
Yep, it does, yep.
Yep. All right, well, thank you. Anybody have questions for the chief?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I kind of skipped over it, Paul, because you weren't on yet. Do you have anything you want to share other than your report?
No, I have nothing further.
Okay, just wanted to go back in case. Okay, excellent. Thank you. Going down to the treasurer's report, we've had a chance to review the vouchers and the abstract for the month. Could I get a motion to accept that?
So moved.
That was John and second. Michelle or John?
I guess I'll second.
Nick? Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Danine.
In favor. Let me just letting some people in here. Okay, I'm gonna move to the public comment portion of our meeting tonight. If you have something other, other than you might want to share at the, at the public hearings, this would be the time to do that if you want to share some thoughts with the board. If you have a comment you want to share, basically give us a little wave, I think, and we'll, we'll call you by name. I see Laura Shore. She wins, so she goes first. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. I know this is a long meeting, so I'll make it brief. I just wanted to remind everybody that Green and Clean is coming up this month on Saturday, April 23rd. As usual, we'll meet in Orsini Park at nine o'clock. The Boy Scouts are on board, the Girl Scouts are on board. This year, we'll be doing something a little different. We're inviting people to sign up on the web to get out. If they don't, a lot of people don't like to like wallow around in the dirt and I don't blame them. Plus, it's, you know, often pretty cold that time of year. So if people want to get out and just clean up their own block, we were thinking it would be a good way for people to meet their neighbors. Jeff has offered contractor bags from the village. And there'll be coffee and some kind of snacks probably in the park. So hoping that you guys can spread the word and we can have a good turnout. It was great last year. I think it was a combination of weather and COVID exhaustion. So I'm looking forward to a similar fun time this year. So that's it from me. Thank you.
Thank you. The weather was pretty good last year, too, if I remember. We weren't freezing too much, so.
Exactly, no rain.
Yeah, let's hope for that.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Absolutely. Well, thanks so much. All right, is there anyone else that has a public comment? I'm gonna look and if any of the board members noticed something, let me know. I'm looking around. Oh, I see Judy, Danine. Go ahead. You have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody in the village that our Memorial Day parade is the May 22nd. Get ready, circle your calendar. If you're going to do a float or march in the parade, you gotta tell us by May 1st. That's gonna be our deadline, so we need to know that, especially if neighborhoods, your streets like to get together. That would be great. This is gonna be followed in the park by a community date. We'll have, the fire department's going to have hot dogs up there and we'll have drinks. And the families can bring whatever they want. Besides, we're gonna have games and fun afterwards. So looking forward to celebrating by, celebrating our community, but also first remembering our fallen military for sure. And we'll have a nice dedication in the park. So everybody come out the 22nd. Bye.
Okay, thank you.
Judy, real quick, if somebody wanted to do a float, how do they get in touch with you?
Oh, good point. Just call me, 861-5645. How's that?
That works, thank you.
Okay.
That's in the official minutes.
Yeah, exactly. Gave that number out to everybody.
That's all right. It doesn't matter. Nobody calls me.
If you need a car warranty, I know a guy.
There you go. Let me see. I'm not seeing any more hands.
I'll say something.
Go ahead, John.
So recently, I met with Douglas Stang from the Boy Scouts. He and I took a tour through Bosinkille Park Trails. And I said, he took the leadership position with the Boy Scouts and they went through the trails. They marked the red, white, and blue trails a bit more than the war. They did some cleanup and we have a preliminary map that I wasn't interested in having it posted or that maybe the beginning and interest of the trails. But I just wanted to let everybody know that they went through, they took the time and volunteered their time for the community. I want to say thank you.
Yeah, and I'll say thanks for John, for meeting with them and, and working with them on that. And a shout out also to Deb Heck, who's here, because she first, she knew one of the contacts for us, contacted them and then they gave, we gave them John's name because he's been interested in working with those trails. And so that was great that you sent me pictures right away. They got to work really fast. So, so thank you, Boy Scouts and John Scally and Deb. All right, let me look around here, just to make sure. Anybody else that I am not, if anybody was on the phone that wanted to say something? Let's see. All right, and I am going to move on. So I'm moving down to the agenda. This evening, we have Kristin Pratt with us as village council this evening. And our first item is a public hearing. Kristin, would you mind reading the legal notice for the first public hearing?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Please take notice that the village board of the Village of Altamont will hold a public hearing on April 5th, 2022, at 7:00 PM, at the Altamont Village Community Room, 115 Main Street, Altamont, New York, to hear all interested persons on Local Law Number One of 2022, introductory version number three, entitled "A Local Law to Abolish the Existing Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals and to Create a New Zoning Board of Appeals for the Village of Altamont." "The proposed local law would abolish the existing Village of Altamont Planning Board and Village of Altamont Zoning Board of Appeals and create a new zoning board of appeals, ZBA. "The proposed local law has been revised since its introduction. "To make clear, the new ZBA will have seven members with two alternates, "to change the effective date of the local law to May 3rd, 2022, "to change the term of office to a three-year term, "and to provide that the appointment of members shall be for a term so fixed "that three members' terms shall expire at the end of year, "at the end of the year in which such members were appointed, "and the remaining members' terms to be so fixed "so that two members' terms and one alternate's term expires at the end of each official year thereafter. "The purpose in enacting this local law is to provide for a more streamlined and efficient procedure "for reviewing land use applications in the village "while maintaining the same substantive requirements for subdivision "and the use and development of land as set forth in the Village of Altamont Code, "Chapter 315, Subdivision, and Chapter 355, Zoning. "The new ZBA would exercise the same powers and duties as the current zoning board of appeals and planning board. "There would be no planning board after the current board is abolished. "The local law would take effect on May 3rd, 2022, "and members of the new ZBA will be appointed at that time, subject to approval by the village board. "A copy of the proposed local law, introductory version number one and introductory version number two, "is available for review at the offices of the village clerk "located at 115 Main Street, Altamont, New York, 12009, "and on the village's website at altamontvillage.org. "All persons desiring to speak either on behalf of or in opposition to said proposed law "shall be heard by either attending the public hearing "or by submitting written comments in advance of the public hearing "to the village clerk at PO Box 643, Altamont, New York, 12009, "or email at villageclerk@altamontvillage.org."
Thank you. Still a mouthful, even though. I'm glad it was you. I appreciate that. So look, before we open it up, I just want to give a brief summary and the board members can add something if they'd like to. This is something we've been working on since January, when we started talking about it. And we, this is our third public hearing, taking the information that we've been getting. I think we came to a nice consensus at the last meeting about making sure that we have as many voices being heard as possible if we're merging two boards. That was the change from the five to two to seven to two. So it would technically a full, it's nine members, two are alternates and seven voting members. So this is, that's the change for this public hearing. So we took all the information from last month and I think we, we had said that and we had it, you know, amended within the agreement and then put out there for the public to read it as we told them we would, you know, what we would do. So if you have any comments on that at this time, you can raise your hand. And I will look for people who are raising their hand first and then I'll go to the phones after that, if that's... Okay, so I'm gonna look around and if board members notice, anybody, let me know. See, Ms. Wilson, you can go ahead. Thanks.
Hi, I just wanted to restate my position opposing combination of the two boards. I think the elimination of two levels of review for major development and construction projects is not a good idea. I think there could be unintended consequences. And I would go along with some of the past leaders in this area, such as Mr. McCormick, who was chair of the zoning board for 20 years, and other leaders who are opposed to the concept of eliminating the planning board and combining them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna look, let's see. I'm not seeing hands. Is there anybody on a phone line that would like to share? I don't hear anything. I'm gonna assume not. Board members, do you see anybody that I'm not seeing? I have a limited device here, so I'm going back and forth. No? Okay, and that's so.
And if anybody was trying to speak, you're not coming off mute. I don't see anybody coming off mute either.
Hey, Carrie?
Sorry, Deb Heck. Go ahead.
I just want to, again, voice my opinion on this. I think it's a great idea. In the past, the zoning board has not been used enough. And the level of expertise that they would bring to a combined board is really just so much of an advantage to not only the village, but to the zoning board members and the planning board members. So, you know, any type of construction that would be done, any type of building permit or subdivision or special use permit, that would all come before the planning board anyway. So to have someone like Danny's expertise on various things, I would certainly welcome that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing anything else at this point in time. So without seeing any more movement or people that need to... Oh, wait, wait.
Danny.
I saw somebody, Danny, sorry, I had to flip back to see you. Go ahead.
No problem. Thank you very much. In response to your decision, I do want to thank you for reconsidering the five, the seven men in the board, so that we have more of a village representation on the board and voice and decisions better made. Thank you.
No problem. Think it's a good idea to do that. I think it worked out well.
Think it's a nice compromise.
And I think, well, I think going to that, but I think ultimately, it's going to achieve everything we talked about, hearing, having more representation, having more people's voices heard. And, you know, more, way more than we do now. So it's a possibility. So if I don't see anybody else, I'm gonna ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Nick, Nick is first and second.
That's me.
This is Michelle. And roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Danine.
In favor. So I'm gonna move to, give me two seconds there. Right now, I'm gonna move to item number two, which is review the SEACRA for proposed local law number one. I know the board has reviewed this. If you're looking at part one of the SEACRA forms, this is a proposed action that only involves legislative action, so we have a yes on that, but everything else is not filled in there. We have, um, there's a, the part two has the, where did I just find my part two? Sorry. Turned everything around here. There we go. Part two would be, I believe, Kristin, am I right? 11 questions?
Yes, that's correct. So we did prepare a draft part two. And we did note, at least as far as our review, we would recommend that there really wouldn't be any of these impacts on the list, only because this is an administrative action that doesn't result in any land use change or doesn't change the procedure other than the, the board change.
Correct. So if the board is okay with those 11 questions that you saw in the draft, and then part three of the short form, you know, it talks about, again, this is the determination of significance. And this talks about the, what Kristin just spoke of. "The adoption of the proposed law is administrative in nature and will not directly result in any land development approvals, et cetera." And in this case, you know, so that's all there, based on the, we find the adoption of this proposal of the law will not be a significant adverse environmental impact. So that's what the draft narrative says in part three. Does anybody have questions on that before I move on? Okay, no? So if you look at item number three on your agenda, it says, "Consider approving resolution issuing a negative declaration under SEACRA "and approving the adoption of local law number one of 2022, "entitled 'A Local Law to Abolish the Existing Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals "and to Create a New Zoning Board of Appeals for the Village of Altamont.'" So could I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
All right, I saw, let's make John, Michelle, can you be second? All right, just because I, I heard him first. Sorry about that. So John is first, Michelle is second. And roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Danine.
In favor. Okay. I'm gonna move on to item number four. Kristin, would you mind reading the public hearing notice for this as well?
Sure. Please take notice that the Village of Altamont will conduct a public hearing in the community room, 115 Main Street, Altamont, State of New York, Albany County, on April 5th, 2022, at 7:00 PM, to consider the 2022 to 2023 village budget before final adoption by the order of the Board of Trustees, Village of Altamont.
Thank you. So before we...
Sorry, I mean, for some reason, I thought the SEACRA and the local law were gonna get voted on separately, but I wasn't reading very carefully. I just wanted to point out real quick that I appreciate that you guys figured out how to handle the large number of members. I remember that was an open item on the last meeting was how, you know, you don't want a nine-year term. I just wanted to draw people's attention that it's three-year terms and three people rotate off each year, which I think is a good solution. So thank you guys for figuring that out.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I moved on quickly. Sorry about that. Yes, it is a good solution. The rotation, I think, is a healthier rotation for everybody. And, and then the representations there. And I will be reaching out to both boards to make sure everyone who is interested, you know, is included in the new board, et cetera. So we'll be doing that shortly for May. And we'll point at that point. All right, so we have a public hearing on the, on the budget. I'll give you a couple of things. And the board members, feel free to weigh in. I honestly, I have much of this information on the device I ended up having to use for the meeting, so I can't look at that right now. But this, this is a very, you know, we try to be very conservative. We started with our budget hearings back in February and we had the second one in March. Our department heads did a really good job trying to keep within their budgets from previous years. And, you know, so we, we don't see giant increases. This year, we are, there is a, we are moving to the tax cap, which gains us about $11,000. It's, you know, to, for us to be using on some of the increased costs that the village is facing. This is the time we took, every year, we try to address departments in our village that need salary adjustments to make sure we're still competitive and that we're, you know, we're paying people for the good work that they're doing for the village. This was the last year, not the last year, but it's the last two departments or so, three departments that we addressed. The police department was the priority. Then Jason Johnson found money within his budget and how we could rework some things to pay our officers, which has been very long overdue, you know, adjustments for starting pay and then those that have been here, a little bit higher hourly rates. We were able to address the court clerk position because there was some recommendations by the judges to raise that rate as well, to stay with the competitiveness of other jurisdictions, municipalities, and what the court clerks earn. And we also adjusted elected officials' stipends as well. I know in 17 years that I've been around, these are, you know, in the police, all these areas hadn't been touched. And we were, we've done every department, I don't know, we rotated over the last few years. And we were, we've done every department, I don't know, we've rotated over the last few years. So I was glad that we were able to do that. We were able to give all of our staff that did not receive adjustments a three percent COLA uh increase, which we really, if we can do that, we wanna do that. Um, you know, they work hard for, in these jobs, and we really do appreciate all the work that they do. Um, the increases that we may see uh on taxes for an average home was about nineteen dollars for the year. Um, that is one of the things, Nick, can you think of anything else that I'm I'm just doing a summary right now without? Or Michelle, or John, I just know Nick is real good with the numbers.
Yeah, no, I I think that was a good point. I think the the enterprise had a write-up earlier that our spending plan is actually pretty uh consistent with previous years. So it's mostly been about moving money, some of them are one-time expenses. Um, anybody that comes by Village Hall will see we're uh finally starting construction on the front of the the firehouse. So that was a big expense that we shouldn't have to carry into future years. Um, but other than that, I think we pretty consistent.
Yeah, we're pretty consistent, and I think we worked really hard in the last year and a half or so to make sure for things that we know that are very expensive, like you'll see later on our agenda, um, some um items for, you know, trying to purchase our next fire truck, because we have a rotation um established. Or our sidewalks that we started last year, we've gotten grant money for both of those. And we're, you know, we're trying to do our best to get that along the way to help us out. Um, so that's, you know, we we do try to do as much as that as we can. Michelle or John, did I, I don't wanna leave you out. Do you have anything?
No, I just uh, some of the deserved raises or money allocated for seventeen years. That's a good thing with the Police Department especially. Um, yeah, pretty much, it's been year to year. It's been fairly consistent. We really haven't adjusted too many things.
Yeah. Catherine, I know you're on the phone. Uh, Catherine Hasbrook is our treasurer. Any comments that you wanna throw in there?
No, no, I think it, uh, the, the budget looks good, and I think it's, it's a reasonable budget for, for the village. I think it'll be good.
Okay, thanks.
I guess one, one last thing we could add, right, is that
Go ahead.
um, for the first time, this will be the first year where we don't have to draw a lot of, uh, what is it called? Fund balance to cover the shortage in the sewer fund. Um, you know, we did raise those rates, but the, the benefit of that is we're, we're balanced now, so.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Yeah, it'll help. And I, and I think we're, we also have been getting some steady um revenue, right? Where it was projected, actually a little higher that was projected for the timber sales that we started last year and are finishing, well, finished last week or so. Um, that has increased revenue that we didn't have. We have another um company coming on, I think they're on but not totally on yet, on, onto the summer. So we will be getting increased revenue from that as well. So we're little, you know, baby steps, but it does help. Every little bit counts. Um, and you know, we were able to give our, increase our support to the library, and that, you know, where we did that as well. Um, so all good things. But with that, I will open it up for as uh to the public, if you have something you'd like to share about the, or tell us about the budget or what you saw in the budget. I'm gonna look around for a second, make sure I don't see anybody. Uh, Ms. Wilson, go ahead. Oh, you're, I think you're muted still. Yep.
I saw, I saw some big jumps in the salaries for the trustee and the mayor and the treasurer, I think. And I just wondered if you could give me some history on what we paid the, those positions in the past.
Um, and the judges as well, all elected positions. They got, um, they all got a bump. We had been, this is something that had been talked about, I, as long as I's been around. And um, it's always something that we always say, oh, we're gonna do that again. Whoops, I have somebody. I'm gonna hold on for just a second. We have some people to mute, I think. Let's see, I'm just muting just to see if I have the right, okay, there we go. Sorry about that. I couldn't hear, because it was a little back, background sound. Um, it's something that we had entertained over the years many times over. Um, they were incredibly low in comparison to surrounding areas. Um, honestly, and Nick helped do some of the research on this. We are now, you know, higher than places much smaller than us, but lower than places that are a little bigger than us. Um, kinda like the Goldilocks of spots. Um, you know, as far as what, what people are receiving, and you gotta, you know, not make any mistake. These aren't salaries. There's stipends. Um, I think we do this work to work for the community, but I truly believe for everyone in the future, you have to have some carrot out there to say, you know, you know, it's, it's not a lot, but we want, you know, there's a lot of work in these positions, and we wanna raise those up, so people will wanna continue to do this work. Um, and again, we've done it, you know, it, for a long time, it's been very low, but this was a, I think, I, I don't have the numbers around the top of my head, but they went up all just, again, just in the same range as a people's, you know, bigger or smaller than us. And we just, we, it was placed in the middle. Go ahead.
I was just wondering if what the history was, uh, like, uh, ten years ago, were the trustees getting paid anything?
Yes, they were. Yeah, it's been the same for my whole time. It's been the same thing since everyone started from everywhere, from, you know, five years ago to seventeen years ago.
With the exception of cost of living, so a couple percent.
And some years they got cost of living and some they did not. So it was, so they're, they haven't moved much.
Uh, for some reason, I was thinking I saw somewhere that the mayor got eight hundred dollars or something.
Oh, I don't know about that. I don't know, not in my time. I thought that might have been, that might have been a quake some time ago.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Uh, let's see. I'm looking just to see if I'm missing anybody who might have a comment. If there's anybody on the phone who has a comment, you could unmute and let us know. I kinda hear somebody, but I can't hear what they're saying. Board members, do you see or hear anything else?
Hi, Carrie, this is Kate Proventure. Can you-
Oh, hi, Kate. I was, I couldn't hear somebody. All right, go ahead.
No, it, well, it wasn't me before, but I jumped in there since you were looking for somebody, and I'm sorry-
No, that's fine.
Not be on video. I came in from the garden, and I'm not really presentable, so. But I, I wanna say that I appreciate the board's work um to bring uh to go department by department and bring salaries up to, you know, a level that helps us to keep people who have experience and to, you know, to pay them a good wage. And I also am in favor of the work that you've done to um, to increase the stipend for trustees and the mayor and our judges. I do think that that work deserves um some monetary remuneration, even though it's not a salary. So nice work on that. Um, I do have a question, I ju- just in terms of, um, not that I've looked at it in the budget, but um for, for the budget line for our council, is that a set amount a year or is that um by the hour?
That's a, um, we have a yearly budget for it. We, we pay, we have an hourly rate, but we pay, but we, we budget so much to use for that. Does that make sense? Like, if we went over that, we would have to, you know, be transferring something. We have not done that, but that's, it's kinda like what it, um, what comes out to.
Okay, and so that covers the meetings that they attend and work that they do behind the scenes to support the zoning board, the planning board, and the village board.
It does. And the great thing about, um, you know, our, our law firm that represents us, Allison and Kristen's here tonight. Um, you know, they, we've always had it in our code for, to make sure we set up escrows for zoning, planning, and the village board for um extra expenses for any projects that come through. And we used to not do that religiously. I, for, you know, we, we would do it for big projects, but if there's something that um, that comes along that is going to take, you know, their time and, and, and a lot more effort than just your normal meetings, you know, the things for the village. Um, we have, we have made it now a real good habit of establishing escrows, so we get that assistance in paying for the services as well. Which has been, yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Carrie, I just wanted to add on to that, that is a, a new arrangement we have with, with this council. In the past, we, we did used to pay a flat amount, and if I remember correctly, we thought we were overpaying in that method. Um, here, we're actually just paying for what we use, which-
Yes. Absolutely. We just budget a certain amount, though, but it's always, it's worked out. Yep, we have it estimated. See, do I hear anybody else? Anybody else on the phone? Okay, with that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to close the public hearing on the budget. Can I hit a motion?
So moved. So moved. Oh, beat me.
Oh, you guys are tight. Nick and John, will you be second?
Sounds good.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Danine.
In favor. So I'm gonna move on to item number five, consider approving twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three village budget. Can I have a motion for that?
No move.
Uh, Michelle is first and second.
I'll second it.
John is second and roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Danine.
In favor. All right, let's move to item six. Consider approval of standard workday resolution of six hours per day for village clerk, court clerk, administrative assistant, treasurer, historian, office cleaner, and Parks Department for New York State Retirement System for reporting purposes. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
John is first. Hey, John, good going.
I'll second.
You made it first this time. Second is Nick. And roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
Favor.
Mayor Danine.
In favor. Item seven on the agenda is consider approval of standard workday resolution of six hours per day for mayor, trustees, and justices for New York State Retirement System for reporting purposes. Could I have an, a motion, please? So moved.
I'll shoot you.
Michelle is first. John, will you be second?
Sounds good.
All right, sounds good, too. Uh, roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Danine.
In favor. Okay, item eight. Consider approval of standard workday resolution of eight hours per day for Department of Public Works and Police Department for New York State Retirement for reporting purposes. Could I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Nick is first and second. John, all right, excellent. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov.
Uh, in favor.
There he goes.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Danine.
In favor. Item nine on the agenda is consider authorizing Mayor Dine to sign renewal contracts with Highmark Northeastern New York and Delta Dental Insurance for the Village of Altamont employees. Could I have a motion, please?
No move.
Michelle is first and second.
I'll second.
Second, no.
All right, John is second.
Oh, no, Nick's second.
Nick is second?
Sure.
Okay. Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Danine.
In favor. Um, item number ten says, consider authorizing Mayor Dine to sign statutory installment bond with First National Bank of Scotia for eleven years at two point nine for seven percent with the amount not to exceed two hundred and thirty thousand. This bond will, uh, is to finance the village LED lighting project with the agreement contingent on approval of bond council. Just a little background on this. Um, you know that we have been in the midst of a LED lighting project for the last few years. Now, we're in uh the same group with Gilderlin, New Scotland, Boreysville, and Altamont. And it's, it's dried out a bit, but we are coming to the very end. Um, but with that, percentage rates have gone up. Uh, NIPA, who has facilitated this for us, was going to be our long-term financer, but they are changing um the, the arrangement for that with all our municipalities that were going to go that route. And actually, the percentage went up to four and a half percent, which would cost us quite a bit of money for something we had worked out the finances on. Um, so we have a loan um that has one of our banks, that our village banks has offered us a loan at this two point nine seven percent. This will be able to lock in that rate, and then we will move towards um getting, in our next meeting, arranging with the bond council, making sure it's approved. We're not signing anything right now, but this is to lock in that lower rate, which actually should save us money from the um earlier numbers. So it's the same amount of years that we were gonna be working with NIPA, but it's a percent, you know, one, one point three lower, I think. So I'm just trying to lock that in and, you know, move on this construction. They, they promised me any day now. It's supposed to start, but I'll, I'm hoping it's done by June. So that's what that is. Um, could I get a motion?
So moved.
Uh, Nick is first and second.
I'll second it.
Michelle, roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Danine.
In favor. So I'm gonna move to item eleven, which is consider approving resolution authorizing Mayor Dine to sign interdisciple agreement to join an existing coalition for cooperation on issues related to the MS four program and stormwater management with Stormwater Coalition of Albany County for an annual fee of forty seven hundred dollars, or forty seven hundred and four dollars per recommendation of Jeff Muller Superintendent of Public Works. Jeff, did you wanna say anything about this before we move on?
Uh, just that uh, we uh, we belonged to this coalition for a while, and then we dropped out of it. Uh, we were doing our own mapping, and uh, Nick, uh, Nick Sala is our uh officer for our program. Uh, he was taking care of it up to this point, but uh, DEC and the EPA are coming out with a new permit. And it's, they were supposed to come out a couple of years ago, but they're doing it now, and it's a lot more complicated, a lot more paperwork, uh, um, just a lot more work. Uh, all the other municipalities around us belong to it, and Nick is kind of stuck out there with the
Right.
no resources. So with this uh new permit coming down the line, uh, it'd be a, probably a big loss for the village as far as trying to keep up with the paperwork if we didn't join it. That's the biggest reason. Uh, just so that he has that big resource, you know, to pull from.
And I think one of the things that we all felt was um a, a great benefit for this is if there are any issues when you have some of these inspections, especially the, was it the federal one, more or less, I think, or? I miss federal. Yes, EPA. Um, if there are issues that the Stormwater Coalition will help you work through those and, you know, get done what we need to get done for that. Um, Boreysville used to not belong either. They had some issues. Um, and, you know, and, and the fines alone, you know, are higher than what a membership would cost. It's, you know, it will really help us. And I did get some information on the new MS four, so it, it looked a little daunting. It came just a few days ago, actually. Um, so this is where I think, if not the only one, I think we're the only municipality in Albany County that doesn't belong right now. Um, so, you were incorrect. So that's what this is, and it's not having an impact budget is something that's coming out of one of our sewer lines, I believe, Jeff, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, okay. So with that, um, could I get a motion for, to approve that?
So moved.
And that was John and second.
I'll second.
Nick, and roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Danine.
In favor. I'm looking at item twelve. Uh, consider authorizing Mayor Dine to sign proposal for engineering services not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars with Barton and Le Judas Engineering, uh wastewater treatment plant disinfection improvements preliminary engineering report. This is um part of the project that we wanna look at uh with some of our federal money, and that's where this will be coming out of for the um, our UV system that we're looking to get down for the stormwater. So um, we'll be applying for a grant for this as well, and hopefully we'll, we will be successful through this. Uh, Jeff, you, did you wanna add anything? Are you good? Uh, Jeff, you, did you want to add anything? Are you good?
Uh, no, I think we're good. We're, we're still in the planning stages. Uh,
Right.
I think, uh, the paperwork has to be in by June, I believe, for any kind of, uh, grant money. So B and L's been working on it right along.
Yes. And they actually contacted me actually today about some, another avenue to help us with this hopefully too. So that'll be good. So hopefully we will work, this will all work out. Okay, can I have a motion to accept that, please, or to authorize that?
So moved.
Michelle and Nick, will you be second?
I will second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov?
In, in favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denine?
In favor. I'm going to move to item thirteen. Consider authorizing Mayor Denine to sign interlocal contract for cooperative purchasing with Houston Galv- Galveston Area Council for the purchase of certain products and services through HGAC Cooperative Purchasing Program. Um, Nick, did you want to explain anything about this yet with that, or?
Yeah, um, so if you could, if people have the agenda, you'll see that there are a couple of items in a row about the purchase of the fire truck. Um, what this allows us to do is to avoid the, uh, time and expense of going out to bid. Um, basically someone else has already done the work of obtaining the lowest responsible bid for the type of fire truck we're trying to purchase. Um, so we're able to basically piggyback off it, similar to what we do. Sometimes we buy off state contract. Um, so this, uh, method, we don't have to go out to bid. Instead, um, we enter into this agreement with HGAC, which is a uh, non-governmental entity that, um, facilitates this type of cooperative purchasing for entities across the United States. Um, and so this is just basically an agreement kind of terms to let us work, uh, through them to purchase the truck, which is one of the next bid items. Um, basically, that's all the contract says. There's no cost to this, uh, to, to work with them. Um, it's just a matter of um, we agree to, to work with them and, and through the, the vendors that we end up going with.
Okay. Uh, could I have a motion for that, please?
I'll make the motion.
Nick will make the motion and second?
I'll second it.
John is second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denine?
In favor. So what I want to do though, before going to fourteen, is I'm going to break up fourteen a little bit. Um, so I'm going to add a thirteen point five agenda item to go to the same thing, uh, because there is an agreement that I want to, we have to do before we go to number fourteen and expend the money. So thirteen point five, I would put out to consider authorizing Mayor Denine to sign apparatus purchase agreement with Toine Inc. For the purchase of the Toine Top Mount Custom Pumper on a Spartan Metro Star chassis for the Eltumont Fire Department. Could I have a motion for that, please?
I'll also make that motion.
Nick will make that motion, second?
I'll second it.
Michelle, roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denine?
In favor. Moving to fourteen, consider authorization to expend up to, this number is modified from the agenda. It's three hundred and forty-four thousand, four fifteen from the Fire Department Equipment Reserve Fund, subject to permissive referendum to purchase the Toine Top Mount Custom Pumper on a Spartan Metro Star chassis for Eltumont Fire Department. Could I have a motion for that?
So moved.
All right, Michelle is first. John, will you be second?
Sure.
Sure, okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denine?
In favor. Item fifteen is consider authorizing Mayor Denine to sign Delaware Engineering Contract Amendment Number One for Fire Department Improvements Project On-Site Construction Observations Not to Exceed Cost of sixty-four hundred dollars. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
John is first, second. Michelle is second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denine?
In favor. Item sixteen is consider approval of twenty twenty-one firefighter service award credits listing per recommendation of Paul Miller Chief. Can I have a motion for that, please?
No move.
I think that was Nick, right? Sorry. Okay, Nick and second?
I'll second.
John, okay, and roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
Favor.
Mayor Denine?
In favor. Item seventeen is consider approval of application from James Hartnett Eastburn for firefighter membership in the Eltumont Fire Department per request of Paul Miller Chief. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Uh, Nick is first, second?
I'll second.
John is second. And roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denine?
In favor. I'm moving to item eighteen, consider resignation of Jamie Mashman, part-time deputy treasurer effective March twenty, twenty twenty-two. Oh, I have a motion. I apologize. I didn't say the words.
I'm so moved.
All right. Michelle, will you be second this time? Because John was going to be first.
No, no, she, she.
No, I, I don't care.
Okay, first. I just saw you first, John. I don't know.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, who's first?
Let's make John first, Michelle second.
Okay.
That's whose hand I saw first. What can I tell you? All right, now roll call.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denine?
In favor.
Can I just, can I just add one thing? Um, Kirby, Kirby Wilson asked earlier why the treasurer's salary went up and a part of that was because of training. Um, that's where the increase, uh,
Oh, okay.
You know, I just wanted to clarify that before you.
Absolutely. Yep, thanks. Uh, I'm going to move to item nineteen. Consider request of the Eltumont PTA to hold annual garage sale along the streets of Eltumont and Orsted Park on Saturday, May seventh from nine to four PM. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Nick is first, second?
I'll second it.
John is second and roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
Favor.
Mayor Denine?
In favor. Um, item twenty is consider request of the Eltumont Fire Department to participate in the annual garage sale on May seventh, twenty twenty-two. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, John is first and
I'll second it.
Michelle is second that time, sorry. Roll call.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denine?
In favor. I hope Paul's going to be cooking that. That's all I can say. Going to be cooking for the garage sale?
Yes, I will be.
Okay, excellent. Um, let's go to item twenty, let's see, item twenty-one. Consider approval of board minutes for February twenty-first, fourth, March first, and March third. Could I have a motion for that?
So moved.
John is first, second?
I'll second.
Michelle is second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denine?
In favor. Uh, before I go to item twenty-two, does anyone have anything else they wanted to share this evening before we go, board members? No? We look good, okay.
I'm just really happy we got through twenty-two agenda items in an hour. It's impressive.
Well, I, yes, I, that's a lot. That's a lot of motions. Um, but I appreciate everyone doing that. Uh, let's go to item twenty-two, consider motion to adjourn. Uh, motion for that, please?
I will make that motion.
Nick will make that motion, second? Uh-oh.
I'm letting John have it.
Oh.
Well, he's doing the same. So John is second, Patty. And roll call, please.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farrenkov?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denine?
In favor. So I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. Our next meeting is Tuesday, May third, seven PM. I hope we'll see you then. Uh, have a good evening. Bye now.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Kristen.
You take care.
Bye now.
Bye.